We're going to call our regular meeting, Murfreesboro City Council, August 8, 2018, at 11:30 to order. This is a new thing we're doing, more of a workshop setting, so I know we're all trying to get used to the layout. Want to welcome Ronnie Martin. Ronnie can't vote unfortunately yet, but it's good to be back to seven members, so we're excited. Congratulations to Ronnie, Rick, and Madeline, so we're excited everybody's back. All right, with that Craig, we're going to move to award of bid of construction contract for the Southwest School.
And Mr. Griffiths will take that on.
Yes, thank you Mayor and members of the council. We did open bids on July 26 for the new Southwest Elementary School. The little bidder was received from RG Anderson in the amount of $24,355,000. That averages out along with the site construction to about $184 a square foot, which we feel is a very good price. We had estimates up to $200 a square foot leading up to the bid. With that, and I may also add that RG Anderson has just finished almost the exact same school in Williamson County and on a very similar timeframe, and it's been completed on schedule. So not only getting the same company, but as I understand it, we're also getting the same superintendent that finished that school, so we feel good about meeting our schedule. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So the request is going to be to approve the award and also the contract, so we don't have any delay in getting going, it's a very tight schedule, so we don't want to even lose a week on this current schedule. And so that's the request of council this afternoon. Generally, what we want to do in a workshop setting is to avoid council having to take action, really focus on more of the workshop aspect, but because of the schedule, we felt like it was necessary to bring this now.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
It's our move.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, we call the rule?
Is that Mr. Shacklet?
It was. Kurt made the motion.
Vice Mayor, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smolynski, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Chris, thanks for y'all's hard work on this.
Chris?
Chris. All right, we will now move into the financial transparency software.
One of the things that was discussed during the budget session was to have council some information, as we refer to as a financial dashboard or dashboard type of information, graphically representing the financial aspects of the city. And we've talked with Tyler, who's provided our MUNIS system. Well, let me back up. Part of that, I put together an ad hoc committee and Darren headed that up and appreciate his efforts, and it included Melissa and Erin, Pam, I think Matt, and IT was part of that, so both Matts, two Matts from IT were part of that. So thank them for all, what they looked at and what they did and how they've talked to MUNIS to get us to this point. Erin has, is going to show council the Tuscaloosa's open data portal website. Tuscaloosa runs what is being offered to us through the MUNIS system, and she can walk through and you can see a little bit of what type of information that they offer. So this will be accessible to the public, to council members, to department heads, so they all have the information they need as we shift authority down to the executive directors and department heads to make certain decisions. So it's an important, I think, information source and data source for, as we go through the organization in the future. Go ahead Erin.
Okay. So Tuscaloosa has several modules. We're going to look at the open budget and open checkbook, and they're going to be shown on both screens, let me know if it's not big enough. So I'm going to go in here to budget. It's very user friendly, where you can just go in and click around, see what you want to see. I'm going to start here with the revenue budget. You can drill down quite a bit when you get in, so you can see here, we're looking at their, I believe this is their general fund budget, where you can see taxes, charges for service. You can see it in a graph form, or you can scroll down and see the actual numbers. And this shows the revised budget, the approved budget, and it also shows the actual balances where they're standing at that time. If you want to get more information, you can just click on one of the items, I'm going to click on taxes. Here you can see, okay, taxes are broken out into sales tax, property tax, lodging, other, again, you can scroll down the bottom and see the amounts that make up the graphical presentation above. I don't believe it'll drill down too much further from that, let's see, well, no, it looks like it does a little bit. So that just gives you a quick synopsis of where we're standing year-to-date with the budget. And that's on the revenues. I'm going to go back over here to the open budget home screen, and we can look at the operating budget for the expenditures. So on this view, it looks like it's showing, you know, the highest to lowest presentation. Again, it shows a graph at the top, but you can scroll down and see it where you can actually see the numbers that make it up. You can drill down here as well, click on the name of the department you want to look at, and see where the majority of their costs going. So you can see, you know, clearly just with most communities, it's going to personnel costs.
Erin, can you show us the overtime, if you go up there to the top of that graph? If you go back on.
I can, I think that...
That overtime, so that kind of can show you multiple years?
Right.
And it can kind of show you a trend of where you've been, where you are currently?
Right. I think, let's see, I don't know if it'll show us, it'll show you what makes up those numbers as well, when you click there on the all button. You can change the charts, make it a pie chart, however you want to look at it. A lot of the data, I think, will be able to be exported to Excel as well, if you so choose.
Is there a lag time as far as, is this current, like today kind of information?
As far as I know, we haven't gotten into the details of that, like if it's, you know, 24 hours after the backup has happened or not, you know. Now that we're hosted with Tyler, where they have all our information on their server, I'm hoping that that'll be a much more seamless, you know, it may not be the same day that the check is cut that you'll see it, but hopefully the next day. But, you know, we're still exploring all of that to see what the timing will be.
But it will be very short period.
Much more timely.
Much more timely than what we would have.
Right. So, again, so I'm going to click here on police, and click on the personnel costs, and then that breaks it down between salaries, overtime, holiday pay. We're pretty fortunate, Tuscaloosa has a very similar structure, you know, as far as the demonstration, a way to look at it. So you can see quite a bit of information, just on a good overview scale for the budget piece of it. Again, it shows the year-to-date, the original budget, revised budget, as we make budget amendments, those get processed through our MUNIS software, so you'll see them here as well.
Erin, can you show them the pie chart, the first pie charts?
Yeah.
Or charts?
So you can see that here. And again, you can click that overtime. And so I'm going to say, show everything. And it shows the years that you're looking at, so you know what period it is. Are there any other questions about this? I'm just doing a quick, brief overview of each of these, so if I, you know, if I'm going too fast, or if there's something else you want to see, please stop me. Now, the other one that we're going to look at is the open checkbook. They call it open expenditures for Tuscaloosa, but this shows, you can get vendor information from here as well. So I can click to explore all the spending, you can see graphical ranges. If I want to look at, you know, the top vendors, whatever segment of the governmental function, and click down here and see the charts, so let's say we're wanting to look at the general fund. Now, Tuscaloosa's showing other things like education, all that, but those are not in our financial software. This would be, you know, the funds that the city manages, as well as water and sewer and stormwater. So, you know, again, we can click in here and look at various expenditure line items. So let's say we want to look at the fuel account for police. You can see who the vendors were that we've used. You can click further down here and look at details. One feature I like in particular is the checkbook detail, where it shows you, you know, the most recent expenses for that line item. So if we're looking at the fuel, you can see, okay, they wrote a check for $4,300 and another one for $2,100. So you can get quite a bit of information from this as well, for the various accounts throughout the city.
What about comparing one year to the next? Can you do that?
I'm sure you can. Let's see.
Right over to overtime, yeah.
So there we can see how the fuel prices have, you know, gone up and down, and where things are looking. That can also help with projecting out.
You can slide that blue bar down there, too. I mean, if you go down to that second one, you can slide the blue section back and forth to kind of...
Oh, okay.
Look at the window of time you're looking at.
To kind of zoom in a little bit.
If you wanted to zoom in.
Yeah.
Does the data that we, do we enter previous data, or do we just start at a certain point?
No, this will link directly into our MUNIS software, so it'll start from, I assume it will look back for as long as we've been in the Tyler product, yeah, in MUNIS. So we started that July 1 of 2015, so we're really building up a good history in that software, to see trends and how things are being spent. Is there anything else anybody wanted to see within these two?
So the real question is why it's not red and white, and the color scheme is more Georgia Tech, so that was a big issue.
Yeah.
We kind of blamed Darren for it.
I mean, you know, I've got to call in with the programmer, and we're going to fix that, but...
Yeah, we'll see what we can do about that.
Chad Biggers has, Chad Biggers got it as well.
So the cost right now, the bid right now, or the, what they proposed to us is $28,000, 20, correct me, 26?
$14,000 set up and 24.
24, 24 annually, $14,000 to set it up, and, but you can see the benefit that it provides to just about everybody who'd have an interest to go in and figure out what the financial status of the city is, so I think it's money well spent. If council is the direction for us to go, we'll continue to move forward and get this set up.
I make a motion that we do it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. So Councilman Shacklet made the, Melissa, Councilman Shacklet made the motion, Councilman LaLance seconded, and we all...
Unanimous.
Unanimously voted to do this. And this is something we've talked about, how long, Erin, how long have we had MUNIS on board?
Since July 25.
Okay. So this is something we've talked about for quite some time. All right, let's move to the discussion on the Blackman Park.
All right, I'm going to go up to...
Craig, let me ask a quick question, because I'm sitting here wondering, I asked you about the population, and you gave me that. Was the population information available on that site as well, so that we could see the trends of how their city was growing compared to ours? I mean, not that I'm so concerned about Tuscaloosa, but I think it would be, it would be helpful if you saw increases in certain areas. Some of it might be explained by population growth and stuff like that, so...
I don't know the answer if that was on the website. I assume somewhere on their website you'd see the population. I don't know if it was comparison purposes, if it was on there.
Erin, does she know? I mean, because I think that's important, if it's not, I think it's something we ought to mention to them that they might look into.
Oh, to give per capita statistics?
Right.
Yeah, we can took it that, if it has per capita statistics in some of the information.
Well, that's not in MUNIS, because that would be part of this.
Yeah. We could build a website that would do that, that's pretty simple.
I was going to say, you probably have, they had, they've got several other modules there that I don't think we've explored as much, because we haven't, we haven't been asked that question, or we didn't ask ourselves that question. So I think, I think we just need to get back together and see if there's an option. They require some type of taking those expenditure items that we know are per capita base, and then we can do some, you can drop it out, there may have to be some manipulation of MUNIS data to get it into a per capita look.
Right.
So I think that would be easily done, because all that data can be exported.
Right.
If you have, if you've got a population column in your spreadsheet, you can...
Yeah, and that's exactly where I'm coming from, because, I mean, in order to relate, you know, what you're paying a police officer, or the number of police officers you have, there's a direct association to your population and your city. And so in order for us to be able to do good analysis on, are we overstaffed compared to other cities? If we looked at their site, and said, okay, we've got one officer per thousand, could we look at ours and do the same? And I think that would be beneficial for us.
I think one of the main things, not just for the council and the public, for the transparency on it, but just from, as Craig said, the executive director, and the director level, even supervisor level, if you want to export that data out, and then you can mine the data instantly as far as the expenditures, and then you can line it up with other metrics that you're measuring, and create that customized, so the manager side can see how we're trending with regards to other cities and whatnot, and then I would expect, you know, we see some great trends, or some not so great trends, those can be communicated back to us.
And the reason I asked that was because the first number I think we saw was their total budget or annual budget, and my first thought was, well, how does that compare to our annual budget? So theirs was higher than ours, and I thought, well, they must have a slightly greater population. In fact, they've got a slightly less population, and so we're operating more efficient, more efficiently, according to what you...
It's pretty raw numbers, but we'll take that.
Well, they had the water and sewer fund in there.
Yeah, so there were some things...
And they had schools, right?
It's not apples to apples quite, yeah. But it does, as Darren was alluding to, it gives, there's a lot of flexibility, once you get the data, you can do a lot of things with it. And if there wasn't a per capita in there, it takes nothing to do the math to do per capita on some website, or a module that they have, they probably do have a module.
I think, again, what I'm looking forward to, what I'm looking forward to this is to be able to mine the data very quickly, so that I can manipulate it.
Right.
Using other metrics that we're going to measure. And I know it has the added benefit to me of being able to communicate to council and the public of the budget and the expenditures.
Right.
And the checkbook, but I can now have access to the data, so I can do some things with it.
Run what-if scenarios and different things like that, so that's the importance of it. Good, well, we'll get, we'll go forward and get that in place. Next thing, on Blackman Park, let me preface this by saying that we're, as of today, we're not asking council to make any decisions whatsoever. Really, the exercise here is, if this is something that council wants to entertain, wants us to look at, wants us to develop the information and bring back a proposal in the future, if it looks like a viable alternative, that we'll do that. So all we're asking now is for council to provide really a direction on where we want to go, and spend some resources, time, put some folks on it, spend a little bit of money exploring this option in the future. The option is this, and as a little background, Angela and Nate are here, and they obviously are much, much deeper into this than I am, but right now where we're planning is on 840, and Veterans Parkway, 119 acres, I think I got that right, 119 acres of parkland up there, and we've spent some money doing some planning and master planning, and worked with Parks Commission on some planning. It's obviously, it has a couple of disadvantages as a park site. One, it fronts 840, it's a, you know, an interstate freeway, which on an interchange, generally what you see there is commercial development. So the highest and best use of that value, whether it's a park site, is something to explore and bring into question. It's triangular shape, which from a planning standpoint creates some difficulty there. It, I will tell you, it is close, it doesn't show on here, but it is close to our urban growth boundary, so our city ends, I don't know if you can see the cursor, but our urban growth boundary actually ends there, so we're just right off the urban growth boundary for the city of Murfreesboro in the future. When you look at this piece of property, and you think we have the ownership of 154 acres on 96, it's, as a crow flies about a mile and a half, it's three and a half miles drive, five to 10 minutes based on traffic. We own this piece of parcel here, an ice square parcel off a major highway, that has some good attributes, perhaps as a park site, it is much more within our urban growth boundary. It does serve this community in here, in the Blackman area and this community fairly well. And so the potential of moving the design to a site that is larger and offers some geometric proportions that might be a little easier to plan, and open up the possibility of using a portion of the 840 site for economic development, and the revenues that would bring, that would be beneficial to helping to develop it, is attractive from at least a request to allow us to take a look at it. The other thought is to use the frontage for economic development, and then reserve the back 65, 70 acres for recreational development, in one or two different aspects that we can talk about perhaps in the future, but reserving the back portion of that property still to provide some amenities and some recreational possibilities out in this area, in addition to the Blackman Park, if it does shift to the south. So if you have any questions, we can certainly talk about it, Nate and Angela can add anything that I've missed and they want to add, or if council wants and provide direction, we'll go forward and we'll take a look at it. Obviously, we'll need to do some geotech work on the 96 site, make sure that it's suitable for this type of activity, and a few other things, we'll do some economic development study. And Paul's here, and he's already provided some good input into that, and appreciate that very much. Some economic development studies on what this would offer and how it would help us in the future in funding some of the development that we have to do.
Craig, is it appropriate to talk about how we got to this point, to have this discussion about sort of what precipitated?
I don't think it's inappropriate to talk about anything you'd like to.
Okay. Good answer. Good answer. He's learning, he's learning the city manager gig quick, so...
That was an easier question to answer when I was a city attorney. There were parameters on that, now it's wide open, man.
I want to give you guys a little bit of background, several months ago, probably five months ago, I can't remember the date, I met with the Tennessee State Soccer Association. You may have read where the Tennessee State Soccer Association has talked with another municipality on the Kentucky line, they were talking with Clarksville. And what they are talking about was a facility that would be, there's like none other like it in the state, where they would move all of their state cup tournaments, Olympic development training, state offices, all of that would be moved to a municipality. So we reached out to them, met with them, and they were very interested in Murfreesboro. Originally, we talked about the Highway 96 property. The advantageous thing to this is that the economic impact that came in, Paul, I can't remember what the number was, but just in hotel motel room nights, it was something like 20,000 hotel motel room nights per year.
20,000 room nights, spread across the year, pretty...
Spread across the year. And so the economic impact, not only in hotel motel room nights, but in sales tax revenue, the number was astronomical on what this would bring to the community, and looking at a facility that would really pay for itself, and then the city of Murfreesboro end up having, really in essence, a free park. So we really talked about the Highway 96 property, but the more that we kept looking at the Highway 96 property, it became apparent that the amount of people that would be coming into this, and the city of Murfreesboro would have access to this park a significant amount of time for recreational opportunities on the west side of town, that we talked about looking at the Blackman, the Blackman site, because what was really talked about is more of a complex that would not only have recreation, but that would have hotels, office space, and all the things that would generate in that avenue. So we talked, and we did a very general, non-binding memorandum of understanding that we were going to move forward and talk about the process, and that's really sort of what has gotten us to this point. They're looking at a couple of different municipalities. Obviously, we think Murfreesboro is the best place, because it's more centrally located. The 840 site being from, coming either from East Tennessee, West Tennessee, or Middle Tennessee, is directly more accessible than the 96 site. And then that's when we talked with our, with the Parks and Recreation staff to look at what we could do on the Highway 96 site. The one thing I want to make clear is that we are, in my opinion, not talking about pulling a park for the west side off the table. That's not what we've, you know, we've talked about, because we've gone through this process. That 840 site is still a good site for a park, but because this opportunity came up, it may be able to be economically more palable because of the numbers we've been getting back on the park. I mean, I think what we could study on the Blackman site for the regional soccer facility would actually pay for itself, as opposed to being $40 million, the number that we've talked about on the Blackman side right now, and then we could use some of that to go help pay for the 96 site. So we actually could end up getting two parks for the price of one, is really the way it would, it would work out. Did I miss anything, Craig?
No, I think, I think you've hit all the points. Transportation is much better, it does allow us some funds to develop both of these parks. I pulled up the map here, I think TSSA had talked about 65 acres, something like that. There's certainly enough space up there, and still reserve quite a bit for commercial development along the 840 frontage road, which is really the important part for the development. And the other properties out there have been, have been zoned commercial, so we're not changing the character, certainly of that interchange, and the synergy that all of that property going to commercial creates is pretty important.
Well, I'll interject a little bit here, too, just because I've had a couple of conversations with people from the soccer world, just because they know me, and they've kind of mentioned some of the stuff briefly to me, so I've learned a little bit about it. But just to tell you a couple of things that I've thought through on this, and, you know, one is a big picture thing, which is something I think we've kind of all been involved with thinking about over the last year or two, which is to try to figure out how we can build a more sustainable park model, you know, that's not just... a more sustainable park model, you know, that's not just, we gotta, we gotta plot down 40 million every five or six years just to keep up with the population growth, that we gotta figure out a way to, you know, how do we, how do we, you know, number one is everybody always kind of looks, you know, is the, how do you pay for, kind of a scenario. You know, there's a couple of things that stuck out to me was the site design, or the site work number at Veterans Parkway was huge. Y'all remember that? It seems like that number was 6 million or something like that, just for site design or site work to try to make that a, you know, the entire area a park. So that seemed like that was a, that was a pretty hard, a pretty high number. I think some of that was due to drainage issues and some stuff like that, if I'm right. So you might be able to shift some of that off onto the development side here. The discussions that I've had on the soccer world is, you know, they kind of talked about, I think the idea is that it's something like a, you know, like a 20-year lease. But part of the thing that I thought was important, you know, is that during that, during the 20-year lease, that the city still gets capacity out of it. And when I say that, and this is important, you know, it's not just, you just turn it over and that's it and they get to use it exclusively, but that they're, you know, what they had talked about was something like four days a week with, you know, six or eight fields, whatever the number was, that are ours to use for our, for the citizens. So while that thing's over there kind of paying for itself, we're also getting capacity. So we get capacity over at the other, at the 96 property by building whatever it is we build there and do the, you know, kind of the more broad-based park. But in, even in this park, that we're going to have somebody else paying for the maintenance, all the ongoing expenses after day one, we're still getting capacity out of that. So we're, you know, when you talk about getting two for the price of one, you know, not only do you get that during the first, you know, if it's a 15 or 20-year lease, not only do you get that during that lease period, but, you know, if you think a little bigger picture here and think, you know, I'm, I don't know, maybe it's this, the election thing has kind of put me into this mode a little bit, but thinking about things and the decisions that we make up here more on a, you know, a 60- or 80-year basis rather than a, where are we right now and how does it feel right this second, is to think a lot bigger picture here. You know, you think about something like this where we don't have those ongoing maintenance expenses for this next 15 or 20 years. You get to the end of that, you get to the end of that period, and if we've gotten the, you know, the revenues that are coming in from having all the tourism and the direct, you know, direct and indirect, that you get to the end of 20 years and you're sitting here going, well, all of a sudden, it's still our park, we own it. And it's, you know, whether it's paid for itself or even if it's just gotten close, you think about the city council sitting here 20 years from now, all of a sudden, there's a, there's a park that has almost paid for itself and is now up to make a decision, the council then makes a decision on what to do with it, whether or not to extend the lease and keep it like it is or do something else, which is, which is a pretty cool, pretty cool thought process, because as I, in my typical thought process, when I think about building a park 20 years from now, if it went from 15 million to build one 15 years ago to 40 million to build one now, I'm kind of thinking 20 years from now, that number's going to be whatever it is, 60 or 80 million. And instead, we're kind of, I think, you know, I think that would be, you know, showing some vision here to, you know, to look at that in terms of, hey, this is a way we get this done a lot cheaper, looking 20 to, you know, the years 20 through 80 on the 80, on the 80-year vision, so.
And what's being proposed, I didn't mention this, you know, there's, we're still early in the stage, but what's being proposed would be synthetic fields. So these are fields that would be used year-round, you know, so right now.
Some of each.
Yeah, it'd be a mixture, but I think there's six synthetic fields, you know, and right now, you know, a lot of the facilities we have are shut down three to four months out of the year, and if there's any significant rain, you know, the burrow bash has been canceled, I think, two years in a row. It's been canceled more.
For.
Yeah. And then the other part with this proposal is we have no maintenance. We don't pay for mowing, staffing, we don't pay for anything. That's all part of the agreement, so.
So is it just fields that they're proposing to build on those 65 acres?
It's fields, offices.
Small thing, a small piece of office space.
Yeah, an indoor, indoor.
It's a small, grandstand field for championship play seating about, what'd you say, 5,000, 4,500.
I may have not heard, what is a parklet?
You know, that was, who, did you ask? We were trying to figure that out.
Portlet.
I'm not sure what a park.
Small parking lot.
It's got to be a park.
The designer was doing in those bubbles was just showing a in-between space. It is, I looked it up myself because it is not a term that we use. It typically refers to just have that access space where you take a general corridor and have a park-like in-between space. Don't overthink that part of the design. Because I've already done that for you. So I think just look at it as a whole. When you see the master planning and level of detail we have already put into the master plan that we have currently adopted, you can see true park elements and true park design. I think the intention of these bubbles is just to give you, this side is park side and this side is commercial side.
Perhaps just.
The baby park, right?
Perhaps a natural grass, something that would not radiate heat as much as a artificial turf would. Maybe it'd be a cooling element.
But this has no reference, what we see, this has no reference to what we.
This is a bubble drawing, so it's just.
It's not referenced to what.
Completely conceptual, there's no planning to this at all, so we could not have parklets.
As a council, we just need to make the decision, you know, this is an opportunity for a P3, a private-public partnership, to see if this is something that we want to at least, you know, research. I know that the other party, we've met with them, the chambers met with them, and I think there is significant interest in Murfreesboro. They are, you know, negotiating with another municipality. So I think we need to make the decision if it's something that we want to move forward with, to look at and see if it makes financial sense and really get into the details. We were wanting to get a little further along before we really, you know, this has been, these talks have been going on for 90 days now, and so really wanted to get it a little further along before we brought it to the council. And the idea of looking at Blackman Park came up on a discussion when we started looking at infrastructure and visibility, you know, a facility like this being so visible from 840 as a gateway to Murfreesboro, coming from that west side of town would be, would be significant. And then at the same time, shifting gears and moving what is now would be Blackman Park, shifting gears and putting that on Highway 96. So theoretically, we could have two different facilities under construction at the same time for that west side of the, the west side of the community. Now, a big part of this is the opportunity to take some of the road frontage that we have along 840 and even the road frontage that we've got along Highway 96 for, for the Highway 96 property and really having the vision to say, okay, it probably doesn't make sense. A great example would be the Segal Soccer Complex along Cherry Lane, or excuse me, along Highway 231, and even to some extent, Sportscom along 231. You know, we had very valuable real estate that went along Memorial that, you know, hindsight 20 years ago, we could have helped pay for a significant portion of that park by not necessarily putting our parks on a five-lane highway. Like what we're doing with schools now, we don't put schools on major roads, and that is an opportunity to provide those services. So it really is shifting gears to find better and more economical ways to pay for our parks as opposed to how we're currently doing it.
Well, I appreciate the kind of creative thinking that this kind of shows, you know, and it's worthy of further exploration, you know, but I guess with the idea that, I guess we have to keep in mind that if negotiations falls through or if they choose another community, there is a fallback plan for the 65 acres to be used as a neighborhood, some type of neighborhood recreational area. But, you know, it's, in my estimation, it's worth looking at.
Bill, you know, and obviously.
Do we have any timeframe as far as, do they want to make a decision?
Well, I think that we wanted to talk to the council, but, you know, we're all represent Murfreesboro and we're probably biased to think that there's no comparison between Murfreesboro and other municipalities. But I do think that if the council makes the decision, I feel confident that there is high mutual interest between both parties that we can make, make something, something work.
I think it makes complete economic sense from a standpoint of where we are financially and our ability to develop both parks basically simultaneously. It definitely gives us a, a best land use, I think, of the property along 840. It, you know, there's so many pluses to this. The 2035 plan certainly encourages us to try and look at pocket parks and parks in different parts of town. It furthers that and expedites the property along Highway 96. I think the neighborhood commercial property along Highway 96, I mean, I don't know if neighborhood commercial includes Chick-fil-A, but the one on Memorial seems to do quite well, located right next to a park, so.
I want the franchise if it does.
But it, it sure looks like an alternative that I would consider very viable and it's something that would be advantageous to us as far as best use of our land as well as financially responsibly, financially responsible.
Say this real quick, you know, one thing else that you kind of notice here is this is, it'd be 66 acres of, you know, out of that total piece, out of both pieces, 45 from one and 21 from the other, that sort of goes to our, at least some of that would kind of go to this discussion that we've been having for a long time of running out of gateway space. You know, I mean, we've, this kind of puts a little bit of that, maybe back into that category, you know, especially the Veterans Park, the Veterans Park piece of that, 45 acres, I mean, that's an opportunity to bring in higher-paying jobs and all that, right where you'd expect maybe business park to go.
And I think what's, sometimes it's, it's easy to focus on things that we could have done different, but I do think, looking at the 150 acres compared to what we paid for that property, I think we paid 26 or 27 an acre in comparing that to what we just paid for 25 acres for the school site. We ended up paying triple what we paid for that. And now looking at the Blackman Park land that we bought, it was 40 an acre, any which way we go, we, you know, I think the council made some good decisions on the property. So now, you know, the reason we bought that Highway 96 property is really to be able to have the discussion we're having right now. And so I think we're, we've got some good opportunities if everything works out.
We've done some site work or prep work or at least exploration, kind of drillings on this site anyway. Has there been anything that's shown up that would be a red flag for the kind of development that we're looking at here, is there?
Sam's probably the best one to answer. I don't believe so, but.
Mr. Shackleton, the site design at the Blackman Park incorporated what we learned from the geotechnical study and how to use the site. So we picked the best locations there for the athletic field and the sports complexes and the park facilities. Obviously, we've got stormwater management to deal with that, but the geotechnical work was more extensive than we would do on most sites because of those concerns. We're very comfortable with the ability to develop that site.
Can we get a list of what the regional park is asking for as far as the whole big picture of this? Because I think that's, that's really going to entail how we move on this.
You mean amenities and what's offered by that park?
Sure.
Would it be kind of, would it be similar to, I kind of just assumed.
You mean for the one that we have developed for that master plan or are you talking about the soccer proposal?
Whatever one that they, that they're talking about with this plan.
With that plan?
Yeah. Because my mind, we need to know what they're looking for from us and what we're giving them.
Right.
So to see what's the return on our dollar. I think it's a good opportunity, but.
Yeah, we have that.
That's the other one. It's not the regional park. Yeah, Kurt, we can give you the economic impact numbers showing room nights, sales tax revenue, and then also what the overall memorandum of understanding on what we understood that they were asking for and then what we would, we would end up providing.
I haven't seen any of that stuff yet. I mean, so, I mean, this is all.
I think that's really the key moving forward.
We all need it, yeah.
And then plus, you know, they can say they can generate 20,000 rooms a night, but if we don't hold them accountable and hold them, have something in language, they're saying, if you go under 20,000 or whatever that number may be, we need to be able to cover ourselves.
Yeah, that'll be all part of the agreement. But the information that you asked for will be part of the study, part of this process? Absolutely.
The question is if council is, and I think I'm hearing, yes, everyone's interested in studying that, I do think we'll probably need to move, you know, I won't say quickly, but Paul, do we have, from your discussions, do you have some timing on what you understood from TSSA?
I think they look for, you know, but not today, or are you guys willing to explore this? And I think.
I think it definitely behooves us to move quickly because, you know, this is going to determine a little bit the outcome of, you know, with the actual regional park, which is this splash pad, you know, all of the other stuff that we've been talking about doing out there in the west part of town as far as park space. So, you know, I'd say the quicker we move on it, the better we are to get started on getting the park built, you know, the part of it that we're just trying to do for, you know, 100% citizens in that area, so.
How do we, and we talked about coordinating all this kind of economic development, that opportunities in our community and fast-tracking them so that we can get people who want to spend money connected with opportunities. You know? And have we, you know, this is another 20,000 you look at, what are we doing to kind of get to do that? Because this seems to me, you know, we don't want, we've got lots of opportunity here, but who's going to take this opportunity and bring it to fruition where the dollars, is that chamber work? Is that, is that somebody that's in our departments?
Right. I think, I think it's both. Obviously, the chamber we relied on quite a bit in the, in the past, and we're going to rely on quite a bit in the future because they do, they do do excellent work. But we want to develop capacity in-house to do that as well. You know, it's part of Mr. Whitaker's charter so far is economic development, and he's stretched very thin right now with a lot of the tasks that he's been assigned.
So he can't handle his job, is that what you're saying?
I'll say he's handled it extremely well so far, we're just waiting. I'm trying to figure out where we're going to break him at some point, so. So, but, but that's, you know, we will continue to rely on the chamber in going out and doing recruitment, and I think, you know, the resources they have are very valuable to us. But, yeah, it's continuing to build that up, and as we get bigger and bigger, you know, we'll have more opportunities and more things to offer for larger corporations when they come in. Not that we don't now, we have, you know, the university is an excellent asset that we need to work closely with and who we're recruiting. So there's a lot of, there's some ground to cover on that and we'll keep, we'll keep after it.
Bill, you know, you talk about things that you look back that you wish you would have done different. You know, we talked about having the economic person not, year before last budget, and I firmly believe that if we had had the person in place that was working on projects like this, or the church project, you know, we bought the church project three years and two months ago. If we had someone whose full-time job was to be able to work on those economic opportunities, I think we would have had a project that's under construction right now as opposed to we're getting ready to start construction. So I, my opinion, the answer is that that's exactly what Mr. Whitaker would do, is to take a project like this and to work hand-in-hand with the chamber and those applicants to say, here's what we've got, here's, you know, if we give someone the overall, yeah, we're very interested in that, that's where Gary and his team hop in and take that to the finish line. And so I.
My thought is, is that we have, you know, we went through a community process. My thought is, is that we have, you know, we went through a community process, we got out there and the people were talking how excited they were about having a neighborhood park and, and the opportunity to be something in their neighborhood and so, and we've delayed that, which is, I think they understand that, but if we're talking about this development helping pay for this development, are we going to be delaying this process here of doing, you know, 96 because we haven't actually, we haven't brought this into?
No, I think it works hand-in-hand.
Yeah, I think it works hand-in-hand. I don't know that it delays it. I think it actually speeds it up.
That's the, that's our intent, I'm sure.
I think it speeds it up just from, doesn't mean to me that you got to have that sold and figure it all out before we're going to break ground at Franklin Road to me. I mean, that's not how I view on it. How I view on it is, hey, I think the opportunity's there. It may not pay for it like literally we get the check from here and we turn around and pay for it over there, but that ultimately it helps us pay for it as you look at it as a whole, be my perspective on it.
Yeah, we'll know what the value of that property is and we don't want to rush out and sell it for less than what it's worth. Sell it for what it's worth and that may be inconsistent with the dollars we spend to start development, but, you know, we can manage that because we, we know we will have an asset and what that asset is worth. So, yeah, on the, on the 840 site, you know, the exercise whether TSSA comes or not is still valuable to, to developing that site down there. I think the other important thing about 96 site as we go through, the master plan that we have for the parks right now is something that we continue to still work with and we continue to work with the Parks Commission and all of this goes back to them before, you know, we make, I don't want anybody to feel like we're getting in front of what our normal process would be, but we can do the study, we can engage with TSSA and give them some definitive answers and, and all of that within a timeframe now that we can spend resources on it and time on it. If council's agreeable to this kind of process that we're proposing, we can get that done in hopefully short order, at least focus on that diligently.
Well, there's more land available on the 96 than we had forecast for usage.
There's more land and it's square.
And being that shape, it's probably.
Yeah, it's easier. Triangles are hard to deal with.
The most important thing messaging on this is from our standpoint to let the residents of the west side of town know this is not doing away with a park. It's, you're actually going to get two parks, you know, because when we went into, I think I remember this Angela, because you were standing at the podium, when we bought that land, our original number that we were working off of was 19 million, I think is what the total, it was either 19 or 20 million is what we thought. I remember David Code standing there saying, we think we can do 19 to 20 and then it went to 27 and then it went to 32 and then the number that we got back was 40. And, and that's really the part that we've got to look at that, not saying that we don't develop or do the Blackman Park, but if we're going to do Blackman Park, then you pretty much can shut down doing Highway 96 anytime soon because there's just no way the capacity to be able to handle $80 million worth of parks. If it's 124 acres to do 40 and we've got another 150 acres, who knows what that number's going to be? So this may be the opportunity, it may work, it may not, but this may be the opportunity where we get two parks and we're really only having to invest in, in one park on 96 and the other one, the private investment helps pay. So the residents really end up winning in the process. Again, it's like economic development opportunities that Paul, we were joking the other day that we meet with all these corporations that come in and we think, okay, we got this one, this is it. And then it doesn't work out. So, you know, it's part of it, who knows? So is everybody cool with moving forward? At least the discussion?
So will we get a, are we asking Parks and Rec to do a concept or here or anything?
Probably not yet. Probably what we'll do is we'll do the economic development portion of it. We'll do some studying on the feasibility of the site, some site work on the feasibility of 96 for a park site. You know, we want to get those kind of ducks in our row and then, then the process for design where, you know, you really do start to spend some serious money, take back the Parks Commission what we need to take back to Parks.
So what kind of timeframe do you think before we see something that might be proposed for here?
Well, if we can run through the initial site, economic development, as Paul indicated, maybe in the next 30 or 60 days. I may have extended it a little to be safe. And understand what the numbers look like and what they are really going to offer us if we go forward. Then going back, that's probably preliminary. We can do some other site work in the same time, but as far as, is getting some design concepts at least on that.
Am I correct?
I think we could hit several different timelines in that. What you have now is just a big bubble. When you think about how we developed the current master plan, we started with concept and scope. We identified the things that we were looking for, the ball fields, the walking trails, the amphitheater. We identified those things. It obviously would not be a pick it up and move it full development, but I think we could meet any timeline that we're discussing with the economic piece, also with some visuals as we move from a kind of that what-if portion into a buildable piece. I think we could bring you pictures to match all along the way.
It seems like, you know, the cool thing about it too is, yeah, we're not going to go pick up from here and just lay down there, but we already have come to basically a conclusion of what do we want to include? You know, you guys have already done the work of what do we need in that area? So it's just basically taking this piece from here. It might not take the whole thing, but you can say, well, this piece, this piece, this piece and this piece, we want to move them. Now how do we structure it?
There's been good work put into architecture and some of the stuff that will translate correctly as well.
Yes, that's nice. I mean, that's at least.
Splash pads, pavilions, those type things should be pretty easy.
Those things, and it's important, I'm glad the discussion's going that way because we've talked a lot with the community about those features and, and these plans could potentially, we can look at options for how to get those features to the community and still serve our citizens and still serve the residents of the western part with something that could potentially be bigger and better and here work with and overall with the park system more physically responsible and more like bring us back to our goals by making good choices now in regards to the property placement.
Just looking at what our, going through the budgeting phase, it was in the capital improvement plan that Mr. Crumley had put forward, the Blackman Park was spread out over a three-year, three and a half-year period for us to be able to get it on board because I think we were thinking 2021-ish was the timeframe. This now may allow us to be able to move a little quicker on how we are doing the financing on that. So, I mean, this may, all that will play into where the community may end up being the winner on helping get it, get it done a little faster. And the community process, like we've gone through the charrettes to show what everyone wanted. Now really what you'd be talking about is you're just instead of working on a triangle, you're going to be working on a square now and let's find out where we're going to put all that.
Also on site one, I think it's important that, I know this is a very crude drawing of what will actually be developed there, but I think that there was so much importance placed on from the Blackman neighborhood that they have a walking trail and that type thing, that that should be incorporated into both the commercial properties as well as into the park area, parklets.
I'd say that name.
Named after Eddie. Parklet named after Eddie.
The Eddie Smotherman Parklet.
But, but let's make sure that we continue to push forward with, you know, the, the public conditioning part of it, at least with the walking trails in this area, even if it's not completely a public park in a sense, partnership relationship that I think would bring our community into it, even if they're not using it as a park facility.
I think what you challenge us for in your role of council and in your role on the park commission is to provide parks and good services to our citizens and to the folks in this community. This is a great one of looking to how best to meet that challenge.
And you've always met my expectations, unlike Gary.
Y'all notice we're only talking about people that we can see? They ain't started throwing any tomatoes back this way quite yet. A little nervous.
All right, so that, y'all have given a good charge that we can, we can move forward with. We'll reach out to, from the economic piece, Parks piece, set something up with Tennessee Stock Soccer and we can send you guys exactly what they're proposing, what our responsibility would be and then how that fits in to what we're doing. All right.
Good.
We've got.
We just have a couple beer permits that need to be taken care of.
Ms. Wright, is everything in order with the beer permits?
They are. One still needs to finish the building codes inspections with the new owners after us trying to run through and the MTSU event is tomorrow night, so we did want to make sure we discussed it for you today. We recommend that you go in and she does and they have that.
So moved. Rick and Kurt with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, if you'll put on your calendar, I think Kenya has emailed everyone out, but especially since we've got some of our media reporters here, the council swearing in ceremony is going to be September the 6th at 6 o'clock in the rotunda. We'll do the swearing in ceremony and then we'll go straight to, we'll go straight to council and we probably, Ms. Machado, we probably need to push the public comment, we probably need to push the public comment section until the next council meeting when we advertise that because I don't think we'll have time to do that, that at 6:30. Yes, ma'am. All right.
Can I get some other business?
Yes, sir. Councilman Lance.
I'm going to make this pretty speedy, but I'm sort of sorry to have to bring it up, but I'm going to just get it knocked out and I can't get, figure out how to pull these videos up. Long story short, the Coleman Farm, the one where we were originally talking about having the, the public safety facility. At some point or another, we had allowed the remote control airplane club to work out of that facility. The runway is pretty far to the south and I've been getting complaints just because I know one of the neighbors over there for months. And so I want to get this on the table to you guys to get a little bit of an understanding, but they're taking off off this runway and flying over top of houses and certainly over top of farms and barns and they're loud, some have cameras, some don't, and I'm getting blown up over it and I'm cool with getting blown up, but I don't think it's cool for the, I've talked to the president of the club three or four weeks ago when this kind of, and it's gotten kind of nasty with some neighbors and, but I've walked around, talked to some different folks and my preference on it is it's not cool if they're using our, you know, if they stay inside the tree line, I'm okay with it. I had the conversation with the guy, the president of the club a month ago and just said, look, you got to do whatever it takes. As far as mine, I said, I'm only one guy, but for me, you need to stay behind the tree line, period. And he says, well, it might just be the angle and all that. So one of these neighbors has sent me multiple videos of them flying over and so I sent them to the guy and he said, well, I'm not really sure you can tell from the angle. And I said, well, I know exactly where that is, I'm pretty sure, but whatever. So this one particular neighbor who I do know has walked out there and taken multiple videos. He's had to walk back to the back, you know, the back fence line and then point it back this way and show them coming over the tree line so that there's no question mark about, well, did it actually cross or not? It's all day Saturday, all day Sunday, all over top of the houses, on this side of the river, on that side of the river. I don't think it's appropriate that we let them use it for that if they can't stay across it. I talked, I asked around a little bit and I talked to Gary about it a little bit about, you know, can we move the runway back up to the north side or whatever? Of course, you're still just going to have people on that side probably that are, you know, they'll be flying over too. But that's where we spray the water, the affluent water, whatever, and so it's, makes it a lot more difficult for them to be there. So this is in a field, the reason it's so close is because that's where we don't spray water. So, look, I'm doing my part to bring it up to you guys, to let you know that it's existing and all that. It hasn't just started. This has been going on since October. They had a pretty good little incident in March or April, another small incident in June, which is when I talked to the president, you know, that kind of facilitated me talking to the president, so.
What's an incident? Is that a plane crash?
Well, no, it's a coming together of the minds, a discussion, a discussion about whether or not it's appropriate between neighbors and the people who are doing it.
So do we need to send somebody out there? Because I've gotten calls about this as well from both sides.
Here's what I would say to my, I don't know if this takes a motion or whatever or just us discussing it, but my particular preference would be that we suspend the deal, whatever the deal is, whether it's a user agreement or whatever, that we suspend it until we can figure out. I mean, I couldn't figure out, I was planning to get the videos to Craig and then he could send them out. I'll just ask y'all to kind of trust me on it. I've seen them, I've got them on here and I can get them to you eventually if I can figure out how to do something about this airdrop or eyedrop or whatever it is, but.
Kurt, I would just say from, you know, if we, if we had a neighbor, this is just my opinion, I mean, I live in the flight path of the, the.
Nashville Airport.
The Nashville airport and I live in the flight path of our airport. So, you know, I knew that when I, when I moved into my house, I knew if I sit outside, I'm going to see Southwest fly over and I'm going to see the MTSU plane, so it doesn't bother me. But the part that I do have an issue with, because I didn't know anything about this and, is that, you know, we've got a water and sewer fill, or water, a field out there that we bought that we didn't really tell residents, hey, we're going to have airplanes going to be flying out of that. That was not what they really signed up to. So, you know, you've got Liberty Station, you've got our Trailhead, it's all out there and so I would be upset if every Saturday I'm sitting in my backyard and I've got these planes buzzing around my house because that's not what I signed up for or what I was told was going to go there. So, you know, I think if they're going to do that, there needs to be, in my opinion, some kind of special use permit or something that they can show, here's what the noise is going to be, here's, here's how we're going to mitigate that and it not necessarily be an end-user agreement, it's something that, it's really a special use. I mean, there's, there's one of those airports in, in Telahoma, right by the golf course at AEDC and, you know, it's, there's no houses around it, so.
So what kind of agreement do we have now that's in place?
I think right now we have a five-year agreement in place with them that we did, I think they did, they did do public hearings, I know, before we did the agreements from what I, what I understand.
We didn't, I don't remember.
That's what, that was my question.
I think we need to research it before we suspend something. We don't know where we're suspending. That's, that's my point of view because I've talked to both sides and I've heard, listened to both sides.
We have the capability to stop any user agreement at any time.
I get that, but you just don't stop it just because one person's screaming. I think you stop it when there's multiple incidents. Have they broken any law? Have they done something they're not supposed to be doing? And we can prove it. Now, that's a different.
Does it, did this come to us there?
Yes, it was a memorandum of understanding or MOU, and it went before Water and Sewer Board and it went, came before council.
Did it come on a consent agenda?
No, I don't believe it did. I'd have to go back.
We didn't have a public hearing on it, did we?
No, we didn't have a public hearing. I communicated it, I mean, we, we attempted to communicate it.
They, they actually signed the agreement, wanted to, had to go to BZA especially for that, they had a public hearing, they had a public.
At BZA?
At BZA, but they, they did, it was put in the paper. But even before they did that, because before they, they wasn't spending any money, they actually invited the neighbors, the adjacent subdivisions over and they flew on a Saturday. They got permission from Water and Sewer and they actually flew out there a Saturday, invite everybody over and say, this is what we do. Because before they invested any money, they wanted to make sure everybody was okay. Neighbors came over, a lot of them still come over and watch. They, especially, they went for a special use permit, nobody talked out against it. They, they got it. They've been flying there for a year.
I think the point is in the, in the neighborhood meeting in October, they said, we're not going to fly over the trees. We're not going to cross the boundaries, we're going to stay on top of this property and the fact of the matter is they're not. So, all I'm telling you is I'm not good with it knowing the fact that they're crossing the trees, crossing the boundaries. Now, what, if, you know, we can't apparently come to some agreement, I mean, I had the discussion with a guy.
Is that the agreement though, that they don't cross the boundary? Is that the agreement though, that they don't cross the boundaries?
Well, either way, I don't care. I mean, I, I don't mean to say it that way, but what I'm saying is if the agreement that BZA has says, doesn't say you shouldn't cross the trees, it should say that, in my opinion. I'm one, y'all, but I'm doing my part. I'm going to bring it to y'all to be thinking about and consider and think what y'all want to think. If y'all think it's okay for them to cross the trees, then I, no, I'm just saying it's the group, then we rock on, I'm done, I'm out. You know, I've done what I, what I think is what is my preference. Counsel, I want, I brought it up, y'all got time to think about it. I mean, I'd probably suspend it for me, but if y'all don't want to suspend, I'm, I'm, that's good with me too, whatever. It needs to come up though. We need to figure out whether or not we think it's appropriate to be happening and what is happening out there currently.
Let's let Adam do some research on it and bring it back up. Yeah.
Yeah, if, if you can get me the, the videos, I'll, um, go with David Ives and look at the agreement and make an assessment and talk with Planning and Water and Sewer and other, you know, if there are any other department heads that need to be involved in the conversation, I'll get those involved and we'll come back with a recommendation, communication to council.
I just sent you the email, but I'm not sure if I've got to do this airdrop before I send it to you or what.
And I'll say, if, if we're willing to look at that, let's look and see if there's any other viable options because I mean, I personally, I mean, I got a plane flown over my house every 15 minutes or less and Saturdays is really much more than that and they're welcome to fly over my house. It doesn't bother me. I mean, after a certain point, you get used to them and you don't even, it's like the train passing, you forget that it's passing. But the, let's look at it and see if there's an alternative, maybe at Old Fork Park or something like that where we could move them somewhere where it would be less residential impact and-
Even the north side, I don't, if there's a way, the north side comes into play here, whatever. I mean, you know, I, I'd, if it's a, yeah, I mean-
I mean, if it's just a matter of moving that location to another location, let's make sure we, we, before we-
It's that same, there was a group that used to fly out of the landfill. Yeah, I want, is that the same group?
Yeah. I don't, yeah, why don't, why don't they fly anymore at the landfill?
The landfill, actually the, the same club has been around here for 40 plus years. They started, uh, at Old Fork Park and city that would use that years ago and when they built the golf course, they displaced them. They went and they rented property for-
I wonder why they did that? Let's move it back there. How about that, Kurt?
I don't play golf.
McFarlane property to build, it's in a parkway, so they then got displaced again.
Not this McFarlane property, so.
Everybody will.
Let's make sure and get that on the table.
He's a judge. That's a judge.
Then they, then they actually went out and cut a deal with BFI because BFI had put ball fields and, uh, place, you know, red areas. They flew there for some 20 years and then the dirt that they were flying on was more valuable, but on top of the landfill, so they said, look, you got to go. So they've kind of been nomads for several years and this is vacant land and they've invested probably eight, $10,000 out there fixing it up. They maintain it, they take care of it. Uh, they just need a place to go. There's, there's nothing stolen about this, but, you know, there's about 50, 60 members in this. They've been here, they do a lot of good things. They had, this weekend they're having a fundraiser with veterans. There's probably half the guys that fly are veterans. Uh, most of the people that do this are seniors, they're, you know, unfortunately it's hard to get younger kids involved, video games today and just hobby. Out there are a large number. They go around to the school and teach electronics, they teach basic, you know, parietal skills and, so that they are a part of our community and most of them are city residents, so.
Let's do this, let's, let's get Adam and David to give us some information and then we can all make a informed decision before we start.
Yeah.
So if we could get that maybe before the next council, next Thursday's council meeting?
Yes.
That would be, that'd be great.
All right. The other thing too, uh, on their other business, can we start looking into, I've had a couple of residents asked about guidelines for Airbnb.
Guidelines for Airbnb?
Yeah.
Uh, short-term rental, right?
Yeah. That's the, the law that was passed just recently, so we can take, take a look at what we're allowed to do because I think it limited us in quite a bit. I think it's going to come up.
Yeah, the majority of, we, that all went through this past year, but one thing that when residents will call, the one, the biggest thing that residents can do on short-term rentals is it be mandated inside their restrictive covenants or their, their homeowner association. I mean, that's the, the, the big one. Um, but Craig, can you, can you get, Adam, can y'all put us together sort of a work paper that shows what the legislation that was passed this year? And I know that the, Kurt, that may be something that when, um, Mr. Fair comes down to do his legislative talk to us before the session, um, that was a huge political deal in the state.
Huge, especially in Nashville.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Related to that, well, just one of the things that we've been looking at, that I've been looking at with the finance department is, um, figuring out how to collect the hotel, motel tax on Airbnb, Airbnbs. Um, and we have a model agreement that, that, uh, that Knoxville has entered into with Airbnb to facilitate that. Um, it's, it's not perfect, but it's, it would get us in a much better position in terms of being able to collect those taxes than we are now. Um, so that's, that's something that's in process, but it, these two things might be able to move in more or less in tandem.
Yeah, that's a good, good idea, Kurt. All right, any other business?
I, I have an annou, an announcement.
Sure.
And that is, is that the, um, city has extended an offer and that offer has been accepted for, to hire a new assistant city attorney to represent the city schools. Um, Elizabeth Taylor will be joining us, um, I believe on September 4th. She, um, she's a, she resides in Rutherford County. She currently is general counsel to the State Board of Education. Um, she's a graduate of Fisk University, went to the University of Memphis for law school, has worked for the, uh, AG's office and the Department of Education. We're really excited to have her on board.
Awesome.
It's Elizabeth Taylor?[1768.16]